We're meeting up the regular school committee on October 15th. We are at Skyview Middle School. If everyone can please stand to say pledge allegiance to the flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd like to inform the audience that if anybody plans on taping the school committee meeting, please let us know now. We need advance notice. Going to read our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leamester Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leamester. Okay, at this time, we will open up the meeting for public comment. If you'd like to address the committee, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Would anybody like to address the committee? And one final last time, would anybody like to address the committee tonight? Okay, having no one step forward, we're going to move on. Superintendent, Communications? There are no communications this evening. Thank you. We'll move right on to the superintendent's report. This is my superintendent.
All right.
Yay! Student report, is there a student who would like to give us an update?
There's a Skyview student with their presentation.
Okay, later on, so nobody from the high school room. Okay, we'll hold off on the Skyview student. Thank you. All right, so this is move on to our professional status celebration. This is a wonderful event that we have every year to recognize the dedication and excellent work of all of our teachers who are now been with us to achieve professional status. And we're going to move right on to our celebrations. So superintendent? This is the best night and the best school committee meeting that we have all year long. The people that are in this room not only are supported by their family and friends, but you're supported by Leamester Public Schools quietly. The teachers tonight receiving professional status have beat uncertain odds. And I just want to say thank you for sticking behind us and making Leamester your employer of choice. You had every reason to walk away from us a few years ago, and you stood by us, and you had admin in this building fighting for every one of you to stay here. So I want to say thank you. The retention of you in our district has been invaluable. So tonight, this is your celebration. And I would like to invite Jen Kiefer, your LAA president, up to the mic, please. Do we have the full committee in front of our cohort, please?
And you can take videos and pictures of this.
Absolutely.
It was just in case somebody videos the meetings, that's all.
Thank you for the clarification. So they're going to actually call people's name up to accept their word, and then you're going to come by and shake them on the head.
So I have words to share first of all. So I just got picked on because I have no cards. It's okay. I'm going to tell you why I have no cards. Because I'm always afraid that my phone will like go to that blank sleeping screen and I'll have to scramble to unlock my phone very embarrassingly. So almost to echo what Paula just said, congratulations. This is a milestone. So that breath you've been holding for three years, please let it go. Let it go. It's gone. You did experience the largest possible reduction in force that I've seen in my history of 19 years, possibly the entire history of Leamester. You have survived, and you did choose to stay with us. I want you to reflect on that first year, that first day. What were you feeling? Nervous, maybe excited, terrified? Not sure you could do it? What are you feeling now? How much have you grown in the three, maybe four years, depending on your situation? How are you feeling now? More confident? You have relationships? You have goals? You have visions, put students in front of you, maybe for your building, maybe for the district? That's what we want for you. We want you to choose a vision, choose a goal for Leamester, for you and Leamester. Make it happen. You have so many supports around you every day that want that goal to happen for you. And you know what I'm going to tell you. You have to take care of them first. So thank you for sticking with us. Last year was rough. I was right there with you, even though I wasn't getting the letter, I was right there. So thank you for sticking with us.
Well, thank you and love them, everyone. My name is Jim Riley, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. And I just want to thank one final person, Ann Pickering, who keeps track of all the folks over. She truly works harder than we all know, so thank you. What I'd like to do is first introduce the administrators of the building to join us in the line. First, the administrator should be CTEI. I have been practicing names all afternoon, but if I make a mistake, I apologize. A busier night, and I'm very, very proud of all of you. You okay? Just a minute now. From CTEI, Daniel Bruth. Jay Cruz. Peter D. Francesco. Michael Bourne. Tara Rongarage. We now have the administrators from Leamester High School join us. First recipient from Leamester High School, Joseph Valboni. Gretchen Hunna. Kimberly Dawson. Raja Lakshmi Manthupudi. Beth Portega. Allison Paquette. So we ask that the Leamester Center for Excellence administrators join us up here. First recipient, Emma Rissard. Pamela Gordon. Elizabeth Lalone. We ask that the Fallbrook administrators join us, please. First recipient from the Fallbrook School, Michelle Dunn. Philip Galvin. Cameron Oldfield. Danielle Piniou. We ask that the Early Childhood administrators join us, please. From the Bennett School, Elena Mornier. From the San Jose preschool, Stacy Baker. We ask that the Francis Drake administrators please join us. First recipient, Jessica LaPointe. Casey Warren. If we can have the Northwest administrators please join us. First recipient from the Northwest School, Sarah Anzalone. Nicole Johnson. Sarah Pluff. Carrie Towle. We ask the Skyview administrators to please join us. First recipient from the Skyview Middle School, Samantha Gorman.
Almost there.
Erica Macedo. Kristy Murphy. Amanda Gray. Wendellin Reamer. Elise Stevenson. Finally, we ask the Johnny Appleseed administrators please join us. First recipient from Johnny Appleseed, Marcy Goiselle. Jocelyn May. We finally, Carrie Mueller.
Could we just have a final round of applause? Can I have a motion to recess?
I'll make a motion.
Okay? Victor's going to start for a little reception, and then we'll bring her down.
We'd love to take some pictures by school.
All right, we're back in session. If folks can be quiet in the audience, we're back in session. All right, we're going to move forward with the Skyview presentation. Does that work?
Well, we need it for the cable. It's all right.
Hi, good evening. I'm Deb Swire, Skyview Middle School principal this year. My two assistant principals, one Doug Nevel, who's one of my assistant principals, and Mark Traynor, is our new assistant principal at Skyview. We decided tonight to highlight our student council leadership. They have a few initiatives, one ongoing initiative and two initiatives this year new that they'd like to talk about. This is, sorry, Gianna and Taylor Doyle-Look. I'm actually going to show the video of Sluts. And who's going to say it? Taylor.
Every year, the Student Leadership Council runs three to four food drives that benefit Ginny's Helping Hand Food Pantry and Kylie's Care Kids. We run these food drives as part of our spirit week. Each day of a spirit week is a different week. All students who wish to participate donate a canned good or $1 for each day. Over the past several years, the Skyview Middle School Student Leadership Council have donated thousands of pounds of food in grocery store gift cards to both Ginny's and Kylie's. After the food is collected, members of the Student Leadership Council take food to Ginny's and restock the shelves of the food pantry. First student has always donated a bus to get students food to eat.
Good evening. The first new and third new, 2018 and 19, many of the bubbles at Skyview are non-functional or may look like this. The Student Leadership Council has started operation bubble. I will go by the, in the few years to come, is to purchase eight of these new bubbles. These new bubbles have the following features of water bubble fill-in, vandal-resistant, refrigerated water, and filtered water. I will be financed these by Skyview dancers. Car wash this Saturday, October 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Skyview Leamester Water Bottle Sales coming soon. This is part of the United Way with venture that me and Taylor will be doing in the Hawks' Nest Cafe, which... Sorry. What's next? We need to replace all the water bubbles in the school. One water bubble has been ordered. We hope to be able to purchase at least three this school year and the rest within two or three years. Thank you.
The Hawks' Nest Cafe. This will be a joint effort between the Student Council and our ABA program. The vision is to design a cafe where adults will come to buy coffee and breakfast items. We have pink goals through this effort. Student goals for the Hawks' Nest Cafe. Student Leadership Council will work with ABA students as role models. The ABA students will take orders and greet people when they come into the Hawks' Nest. This allows for human interaction and working on social and emotional skills. There will be order takers making the orders, cashiers, and cleanup slash organizing. All proceeds will go to the organizer, to Operation Bubble. As you can see, Student Leadership Council is actively involved in making Skyview the best it can be. Thank you for your attention.
Sorry. Anybody have any questions?
Tell us more about the car wash.
More about the car wash?
Where would be? Oh, it's the set. It's the set. That's the exciting part.
It's this Saturday, October 20th, at Skyview Middle School in the parking lot from 10:00 PM. 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Not much.
Yeah, maybe $5 per car. Of course, it'll go to the water bubbles.
Nice. Good job. How much does one of the bubbler's cost?
The water bubbles range from $1,000 to, for say, $1,600.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nice job, and very well worth it for those initiatives.
Thank you.
Good job. Who wants this question? Thank you. So at this time, we're going to just jump around a little bit because Wendy will need to leave. We're going to do the subcommittee reports, and then we'll go back on to the policies.
Yes, thank you. So tonight at our policy subcommittee, we had the middle school principal come before us. We were talking about trying to problem solve some of the issues around the extracurricular fees. And it was brought to our attention some of the disparities between the two. So what we, it's going to be an ongoing project, but the first step that we are going to take that I'm ready for you to recommend tonight is we're going to adjust the fees for the middle school extracurricular down to 25, and then 15 for the free and reduced lunch. And I'd like that before you all for a vote tonight, so that we can get letters out to families.
Are you making a motion?
Do, should I make a motion, or do I have to ask? I make a motion that you all accept the change in fees for middle school extracurriculars to 25 and 15 according to our structure where we have a separate fee for the free and reduced lunch students.
Do I have a second, Ron? Any questions? The only thing that I would add is that with all of our fee structures, if there's anybody who is having financial difficulties, they certainly can talk to the administrator at school on a case-by-case basis if there needs to be any other financial arrangements made.
And letters will be going home soon with students to, on how to take care of them. Who in each building would be the touch point for paying the fees or who to reach out to if you have any concerns or need to make some sort of arrangement.
All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Finance subcommittee?
Well, we have the report.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move back up to the Professional Development Day reports. Ken, will you join us?
Okay, can you hear me? Just let me... So first, we want to introduce ourselves. I'm Jen Lundy. It's nice to see all of you. And I'm excited to be able to have her introduce herself. But she's within Leamester Public Schools and a leadership or looking to be in a leadership role at some point. So it's nice to be rolling within our district.
So, good evening. My name is Katie Jengres, and I am the guidance counselor at Johnny Appleseed School. And I just want to thank you all, and Jen, and Paula for letting me be here tonight. So I am a candidate in the Education Leadership and Management Program at Pittsburgh State, and I'm in my last semester.
Congratulations.
Thank you. A part of my requirement to graduate in December is to present to the school committee on some things that I've been involved with. So Jen, I thought that this would be a great opportunity for me since I played a role in creating the professional development for social and emotional learning a couple Fridays ago, as well as facilitated it within my building. So we're just going to kind of break down what they look like quickly, and I'm going to give you some feedback on what it looks like in one individual building. So it will look a little bit different based on the anywhere, but I'm going to give you some feedback about it. feedback.
So on October 5th, we had a very exciting day from my perspective. We focused on social-emotional learning for the morning part. It was a district-wide Professional Development Day, but we respected and had heard staff's feedback and wanted to be in their own building. So I'm gonna give a shout-out to the IT team in because they made this magic happen. Everyone was able to stay in their own buildings, including the central office. But what we did is we all went through the same agenda. It was part of your package, it was the presentation, the videos and exercises. Everybody across the district did the same exact thing. And it was all about social-emotional learning. What is social-emotional learning? Ultimately, it is what children and adults need to acquire to be able to be successful people in their lives. Knowing how to have empathy for one another, knowing how to be... Want to take perspectives from other people, problem solving, setting goals. All of that is what we were looking at on that Friday. It was pretty incredible to go through that process organically, especially in the central office. We wanted to also not only talk the talk, but walk it as well. This isn't just for students, it's for people. It's about being human and kind. So we wanted to also make sure that staff knew that this was not an add-on. For all of the other challenges and obstacles and pressures that we know what they have, it's really about integrating and embedding it within our daily life. So it's okay if people didn't or don't believe in SEL, or we say SEL for social-emotional learning, but we're expecting at this point that everyone's going to start practicing it because it's the right thing to do for our students and ourselves because in order to... We have to take care of ourselves in order to be the best we can in front of our students. So I think... Oh, and so in your package, there's a folder that you have to do. And so the outcome of that day, everyone, we had exercises, once we exercised it better in your folder, and then in the outcome, everyone reported out to the entire district, again, that was the IT, I, who... About their short-term and long-term goal or goals for their building. Everyone came together and you were able to hear it and you have that in front of you. So what we're going to do now is just have you experience just six minutes of what we did that day. It was pretty cool. We're gonna see two videos. The elementary school had just one video and then the middle and high school had one video to watch. We did separate the two and although it's the same message, even though the levels are different. So we're gonna start with every opportunity.
Hey, Mrs. Q. Did you see that? Why would somebody do that?
Please go into the classroom. No talking, quietly.
Yes, ma'am. Time to...
We need you in line.
How do you think that makes us feel?
I forgot my number.
What's your name?
Jordan.
What's your last name? Carter?
School is hard enough.
Come on, Anne, sit down quietly at your desk. It's time to get ready.
This time, I just miss your honor.
I said quietly, please. Who's talking? Is it yourselfy? Don't let it be you.
Don't believe me? Please just watch.
I'm not up here for me, I'm up here for you. Pay attention, okay? Now, somebody answer me. Somebody needs to answer me really fast.
Every time we're ignored or yelled at or silenced, they teach you taste the way it was possible.
No horseplay, no running, and especially no talking.
Moment by moment.
McGarvey, your students' behavior yesterday in the lunchroom was terrible. Next time, silent brunch. Did you hear that? Stay in line and catch a ball. I'm not playing.
If this is education, we're in trouble. Bye, Mrs. McGarvey. President Douglas said, "Once you learn to read, you will be forever free." The way it is now, two of the three of us would never be able to really read. It doesn't have to be this way.
Hey, Jordan. How you doing?
Good.
Everyone we keep throughout our day can be confused.
I've been waiting for you to arrive.
Audit it.
Who are you?
Oh, Jordan.
Good morning, Jordan.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks for asking. How are you?
Good.
Go ahead, put your number in.
Talk with us, not us.
That's okay, I'll look it up for you. Go ahead, sweetheart.
Okay.
All right.
Teach us what we need to know. That's how we get smarter.
Good morning, Sophie, Denise, and Jordan.
And when you talk with us and teach us, give us bigger and bigger words.
Now, what I'd like you to do, children, is turn around and converse with your neighbor and discuss where the mother might have gone.
Words that we can use to read and understand.
She is crazy for evil, so she knows that way.
And that would take us places we could never reach without it.
Remember, we're entering the learning zone. Now, how can we show our respect to the children and teachers who are working?
We can walk quietly?
Yes. Okay, kids, what I'd like you to do is continue writing your narrative, documenting your emotions. If you were the baby owl and your mother abandoned you in the nest...
What can you do? Well, audit you can so that you can challenge us to be our best.
We want to study and assist them and whatever they need.
Share yourself with us and show us how to share our skills with others. Give us courage. Give us compassion. Help us follow our own voices so we can become who we are meant to be. Why don't you wanna say it, guys?
What does it feel like to not have a single caring adult at school?
It feels pretty sad.
Tired.
Discouraging.
Harsh and messed up.
You don't have anybody to talk to, nobody you can trust to go to for help. It's hard.
Helpless.
Useless.
It feels like we're set up to fail or that it's a waste of time for us being here. A stereotype that students have colored faces is that...
They're lazy.
Not being good enough. That they're ignorant.
They don't want an education.
Twice as hard for the same opportunities.
I usually get called that I'm gonna be pregnant and I'm gonna drop out of high school. That's not who I really am. We internalize that and actually believe that we can't learn. We're products of our education system, but they know what we learn differently.
I didn't have the time or resources to help my students, but we prioritize relationships and it has made all the difference.
I'm not supposed to graduate, but this is what success looks like. For every successful student, there's a positive relationship.
So what do relationship-centered schools feel like?
Successful.
Support.
Yeah, well, they're big, inspiring.
I feel like I can be myself. Who needs you personally?
Wanting.
Exciting to learn and chilly.
Just happiness.
It feels like a place I'm welcome and actually a place I can succeed in. Together, we can do this. Together, we can create relationship-centered schools.
Will you join us?
All right. So I think just a quick takeaway from those two videos is it's a piece of strengthening relationships that we have with our students through SEL and utilizing SEL throughout our everyday. And it might seem kind of confusing, how can you use SEL in math or reading or psychology or chemistry? You can. And a lot of what we did on Friday's PD was looking at how you can incorporate it into content areas. So that was a piece of Friday. So what I'm gonna do quickly is just explain a little bit of how we rolled out and played out Friday. So prior to the PD, schools put their staff into vertical teams, which instead of content area or by grade, they were all kind of mixed up. So we had groups that had a kindergarten teacher, with a fifth-grade teacher, with a speech pathologist, with an interventionist. So we wanted to do this so people could get used to being with other people and interacting with different staff that they're not used to. And here in their perspective, I sat in on a group and I heard a lot of helpful things from a kindergarten teacher that a fifth-grade teacher was like, oh yeah, you know, I could really use that in my class. So it was really helpful and I think, again, from the Johnny Appleseed perspective, it was really positive. And I think that staff were really eager to change and really apply it to their everyday. It doesn't have to be something extra, like Jen said. It can be simply saying hello or making eye contact with somebody and asking how their day was. So what I'm gonna do quickly is just share out the short-term and long-term action plan from Johnny Appleseed and you guys have that. So a couple of our goals, add social time every day, so many morning meetings, asking how every night was or what weekend was. Greet as many kids as you can by saying hi and good morning. Smile. At dismissal, identify a positive aspect of their day and sharing with a buddy. Long-term action plan, mindful minute during morning announcements. And our PDIS, we want to have more of a welcome back assembly in the fall and then maybe regressing our positive intervention system for our older kids because sometimes they don't really get excited about our activity. So just kind of thinking about how we can increase their motivation. I know for me personally, going through the PD, sometimes we're rushing down the hallway to get somewhere, we forgot something, we have a meeting, we're stressed out, and you walk by a kid and you might not... You make a mistake. And so going through this, I really thought and focused on, I'm gonna say hello to that kid I might not know, or stop and say good morning, stop and ask how their day was. Even though I'm stressed, even though I'm busy, they're watching and I think it's really important to take a step back.
So we did send out an evaluation and the results were really positive, actually. And so that was kind of exciting to see. In the beginning, a lot of the folks had said that they voted for PD. Forty-two percent of staff reported to have some knowledge of SEL, so it was like about three, is what they said. But after the PD, 60% of staff reported to have gained a great deal of knowledge of SEL. Thirty-three percent of staff reported to have gained an extreme amount. So that was really empowering and gave us as a district and as buildings to see that we had our goals for people to get at least one thing out of this. And to me, this, these evaluation results tell us that.
So this is just more about positive results that you guys can see that piece, but I think Katie's gonna talk about reporting out on what was helpful from the schools or from the meeting itself.
I think the biggest thing for the staff was being able to interact not only with different people within their building, but being able to hear from different schools too. And they're recognized because I was the one who had to share out in front of the Google Hangout, but being able to see and hear what they had to say and what they spoke about, collaborating with the vertical team, sharing with colleagues, the videos, and I think being able to have it school-specific because even though we all saw the same thing, our conversations were never looked different and our action plans clearly looked different as well.
And so the recommendations for the PD, one of these, one of the cases is that this is not a one-and-done where we are holding ourselves accountable, both individually and as a building and as a district, that we're going to continue to follow up on this to make sure that we continue to grow it because we know, again, that not everybody's on board yet, but that's okay as long as you start practicing that. So really, the recommendations that folks gave to us was that they wanted to have a longer PD of this. They wanted to talk more about it. They wanted to interact with the other schools more. They wanted to collaborate more. They threw in lots of positives about the vertical teams. And so continuing SEL into the afternoon that day, but also ending it.
So it sounds like that forum was something new, obviously, that you tried and was very successful.
Yeah. It was an opportunity that I... Don't say we're taking risks anymore. Say we're taking an opportunity. So when buildings lost power that morning, we definitely had the opportunity to learn. But we pulled it off. Steve Maloney and his team did an excellent job and it just felt... It was the reset button that I found that we needed district-wide. Coming up on my one year in this position and with all the interviews that we've done with staff and students, I've yet to hear someone say, oh, I hope that teacher has great content knowledge or she's got a great pedagogy. What we usually hear is, I want someone who cares about me. I want someone to say hello to me. I want someone to notice me. And so it was a nice way for us to take a deep breath and as a district, but still having the comfort of our colleagues, our ABA colleagues, just felt right. And again, like Jen said, we shut down the whole district so that everybody participated at every level. And then 11 o'clock, we came on live, nine buildings, we connected. And it became a little bit of a challenge in the buildings who had the whole school spirit. It really was a great, great experience. So try to keep that energy going.
Wonderful. Thank you, ladies. Any other questions?
Was this conveyed by Skype or...?
So we used our new meeting. We went through the Google platform. We had cameras set up in nine buildings and teachers were gathered in a cafeteria or wherever they could manage. And we had an IT person there trying to make sure that we were gonna get out. Yes. Yep. And then everybody popped up on the big screen and Steve managed it from central office with a lot of deep breaths. And it went on without a end. That's how you use technology. That was appropriate for us to do and it really was... It was a new step for us.
That's great. Donna?
I think this is a really great professional development that we did across this time. Congratulations to all of you for putting that board because we've heard so many times in the past that we need to improve professional development. What's the use of professional development? Here's a classic example of how it works well. So thank you.
That's great. Anybody else?
Yeah, just want, good job. And I don't want to minimize the fact that before I had a name, I've been wandering the buildings for 25 years and then my kids were in the buildings and I was in the buildings. So that's a long time, but I just like to give a little credit to the teachers that have practiced this without a real label to it because most of the buildings I go to and most of the teachers I see, they've done that. So that's good. It's got a name now and you can encourage it for those that maybe got tied up. And it's hard today because I think so much emphasis is on the lesson plan and I've gotta get this done. Twenty interruptions and a fire drill messes me up for the next 30 minutes. That's a good thing because those teachers are very focused on the overall mission, but at the same time, we can just kind of forget the human aspect of this too. We're not widgets, we're more people. So, good job.
And this process brings passion back to education.
I'll just mention, I've already heard from a couple of teachers who said this was the best PD ever. Good job.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. So now we move on to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
From August 28, 2017?
Correct.
Or the second?
Oh, 17, but I think there was a... Was there a mistake in the thing? Because last week we didn't... Or last meeting, we didn't have the minutes. Is that just a typo? I think this was put in because of the... So I'm seeing up our... I'm sorry. The activities.
Yep.
The one we need to do is the Policy Subcommittee of August 28th.
Okay. But we didn't...
Have a second reading? No. It's a long story. I had my laptop in my car.
That was Don Willie Nelson's book. It's a long story.
It's a long story. And next week, you will get the minutes from the last meeting.
So we the last two meetings?
The last two, correct.
And actually, this meeting was the...
Yes.
Trust that.
No, we didn't... The only one is the policy.
The August meeting. And that we didn't approve.
Wait, September 17.
Yes, I know, but I'm trying to figure it because we're missing several.
September 17, which I want to hear. The last one, the last one to the car, so there's the two and then after this one there'll be three. The only one that's in the packet is from the policy subcommittee of August 20, 2018.
Okay, so Dean made a motion to approve that one.
That's correct.
Another second. All those in favor, there's nothing there to approve.
Excellent, awesome, thank you. All right, action items, committee action items. About new and old business.
I was just going to say one thing, just that this is probably the 15th year in a role that I've advocated for either a Professional Development Day or more, more involvement and exposure by the teachers and staff in our businesses, especially the larger ones. And I say that with extra emphasis this year because more and more of the tours that we're taking at the manufacturers and the different businesses, schools from out of the district here are coming, sending their teachers out. So I say that with extra emphasis this year that I don't know how, maybe it doesn't, maybe it's not a Professional Development Day, but how we begin to get staff and teachers to the school, to the businesses so that they can understand sort of what's, what skills are required, what's going on in those businesses. So this is, could be my 20th year, you can, I'm just throwing it out there, just seeing, but I think it's, I'm emphasizing it even more so, as I said again, because now the other schools are coming, the other districts are coming from everywhere to come to tour our buildings because they want to be more engaged and more, have an understanding of what's going on in manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, robotics automation and the other skills that they need. So that's not, that's not a criticism against us, just to advocate for maybe a Professional Development or a semi-professional Development Day. That's all. That's my two cents.
All right, thank you. Hi.
I just want to mention, I went to a presentation last week by Brockton, Holyoke, Springfield and Worcester about the foundation budget and the effects it's having on them. We've seen some of that here. So I want to just, me to keep on that. The, the way that they've toyed with the formula this year has hurt us some and has hurt them a lot. Dean, you mentioned last school committee meeting, we're disappointed in the resolutions from MMSC, we didn't mention this, but they had, their president was there, it's already on their agenda because I think we've done their resolution before, so they're already working on it. And president, Mass Association of School Teachers was also there, it was also on it.
That's devastating. It's, it's not even hurt, it's devastating that in an economy that we're in and communities and pregnant businesses that, you know, skyscrapers everywhere and they haven't changed the foundation budget. And maybe next year it's on election year for the legislature, maybe next year they'll tackle it, but certainly that wasn't going to happen this year, so.
Springfield and Worcester both have more than 700 fewer teachers than they're supposed to have according to the way that.
But there was a nuclear budget crisis, Alabot, I mean, the communities, they're just one after another. Unless you're part of that metro Boston area, the really interior part, you benefit by it. It's sad.
Yeah, it's definitely affecting everyone. Thank you for attending that. Anybody else? I just wanted to remind people that there's, I think, Ron, Nona, myself and all are going to the school committee conference. If anybody else is able to go, speak now or call Chris and let her know, but it's quickly approaching.
Is this Gina's last meeting or do we have another meeting in the morning? This is it, Gina? This is your last?
Gina.
Monday night, you have to come out. Weather sometimes isn't great and you've been here a long time and the wind is howling and it usually snows and rains, the weather's never good on a Monday night, but you always show up to every single one of our meetings. I don't think you ever miss one. You always plan your vacations around when our meetings were. You're always helpful, willing to share information, be part of the team. We'll miss you here anytime you feel, you need to show up to one of our meetings, please come. Thank you so much for the work that you've done.
Very true.
Thank you for your years of dedication, not only to us, but more importantly to the students. You've impacted them greatly throughout your career, so we really appreciate everything.
How many years have you been with the school department?
Thirty.
Wow.
Forty, fifty, one, two.
Also total education.
One.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Well, the important thing is you come in, you leave with the same excitement that you came in with. That's a hard thing to do in that profession, but you did it. Mission, mission accomplished.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. If nothing else, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Awesome, thank you. Next.